Welcome, everyone. My name is Dylan Fisher. I am the Economic Development and Advocacy Manager with the North San Diego Business Chamber. We are thrilled to bring you this candidate forum this evening with our partner, SDG&E. The purpose of the forum is for you to get to better know the names you'll see on the November ballot and the policies that they stand for that will shape our communities. Briefly, before we get started, I want to let everyone know we are a nonpartisan chamber, so we will not be endorsing any of the candidates you see here tonight. We will solely be informing you on their policy plans and their priorities if elected. A couple of notes before we get started. This will be recorded and posted to the Chamber's YouTube channel in the coming days. And once it is up and live, I will share a link with everyone who's in attendance today so they can go back and share it to whoever they see fit. And then another point is, we will have audience Q and A towards the end of each session. If you have a question, please utilize the chat feature or the Q and A section of Zoom and put your questions there, and I'll make sure the moderator gets them as they come in. And then, last but not least, I wanted to say thank you to our partner, SDG&E, because without their help, we would not be able to host a community event like this and bring you this information. So, thank you to SDG&E. And with that, I will introduce our moderator for today, Joe Britton. Joe is the Public Affairs Manager with SDG&E. His responsibilities include coordinating relations with city councils and other elected officials in appointed offices in Inland, North County, and East County. In his role, he works to develop and promote civic and community relations through the coordination with chambers of commerce, economic development groups, and other community organizations. Joe is the co-chair for our own Economic Development and Advocacy Advisory Council, and I couldn't think of a better person to moderate this discussion here tonight. With that, I'll pass it off to Joe. Good evening, Joe.
Good evening. Thank you so much, Dylan, for the introduction and welcome to our candidates. We're really excited tonight to host our first candidate forum by the North San Diego Business Chamber of Commerce, and we, again, really sincerely appreciate the candidates' participation this evening. I'll quickly introduce Supervisor Gaspar. Kristin Gaspar was elected to the San Diego County Board of Supervisors 2016 after serving four years on the Encinitas City Council and as the first elected mayor of Encinitas. She's a mother, community leader, and small business owner, working as CFO of her family's small business with seven employees, employing nearly 150 San Diegans. Welcome. Tara Lawson-Reimer is a third-generation San Diegan who served as senior advisor in the U.S. Department of Treasury during the Obama administration. As an economist with United Nations and World Bank, she worked around the world to create jobs, restart businesses, and generate economic activity after crisis. Welcome, Tara Lawson-Reimer. So, with that, the format for tonight is we'll give each of you two minutes to provide some introductory comments. Then, we'll go into about 30 minutes of prepared questions, and then leave some time at the end for audience questions. Again, please feel free to type those questions into the Q and A feature, and Dylan will make sure we get those asked at the Q and A. Following that, we'll wrap up with some closing thoughts. But with that, can we start with you, Supervisor Gaspar?
Sure. Thank you to the Chamber for hosting us tonight. Really pleased to join you. My name is Supervisor Kristin Gaspar. I'm a 35-year resident, wife, a mother of three kiddos, the first elected mayor of the city of Encinitas, former Rotary Club president in Encinitas, and the youngest woman ever elected to the Board of Supervisors. After three terms in office, many of you are familiar with my extensive track record while in office. Number one, I raised my hand to work on some of the most challenging issues out there in our communities: homelessness, human trafficking are two of those issues, wildfire prevention, you know, housing, housing affordability. How are our kids going to come back and live in San Diego? How are we going to afford to live here in San Diego? Transportation, not being a stranger, to go up against failed plans coming out of our regional planning bodies. And no matter what the issue, I'm vocal. I'm very accessible as an elected official, and I collaborate throughout the region. One other thing that's been a hallmark of my success is my willingness to work with everyone to get the job done. This is a regional job. It requires you to work across local, state, and federal governments. It requires you to work with other elected officials that are in the chair. You know, sometimes I'm called out by Democrats for my willingness to work with the Trump administration. Sometimes I'm called out by Republicans for my willingness to work with Governor Newsom's administration. I want to make one thing clear. I will work with either of these administrations to produce results that are good for San Diego. I will oppose both of these administrations when they are doing things that are harmful for San Diego. I will work with everyone to get the job done here on the local level. Unfortunately, in this race, you only have one person, and that's me, willing to work across local, state, federal, no matter who is in the chair. Multiple examples of times when I've supported the presidential administration, these examples have included times where they were increasing funding for combating human trafficking here in our communities. An example of opposing the administration when they produced an offshore oil drilling policy that would have been very damaging to San Diego. And on the state side, working with the state governor, working with him on policies that help with juvenile justice reform, and also on issues related to the opioid epidemic and substance abuse treatment. And of course, there are times when I oppose the governor, too, most recently with the new metric system that we're operating under, a one-size-fits-all policy. It's been my pleasure to be here in the chair. It would be my great honor to continue to represent you on the Board of Supervisors. Look forward to answering your questions tonight.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Hi. Thank you so much for hosting us. It's really a pleasure to be here. I'm a third-generation San Diegan. My grandfather was a Marine stationed at Camp Pendleton. My mom grew up in Vista-Oceanside, and when I told her what we were doing tonight, she said to mention that she used to go to the Sears Roebuck in Escondido as the big box store in the neighborhood. So, it's really a pleasure for me to be here as well. As mentioned in the introduction, I had the honor of serving as senior advisor in the Obama administration. By training, I'm an attorney and a political economist. I did my law degree, my PhD in political economy at NYU, and I have worked around the world, working to help economies recover after crises, as well as working to help cut pollution from oil companies and mining. And so, it's really a great honor to have the opportunity to ask for your support, to bring the skills and experiences I've built over a lifetime home to serve my own community, where I grew up and where I'm now raising my daughter, Eva Kai. I'm also very honored to have earned the support of basically every elected official across Southern California and really our state. Everyone from Senate President Pro Tem Tony Atkins, the governor, Governor Newsom, our current supervisor Democrat Nathan Fletcher. There's a number of others, our whole Assembly delegation, our Congressional delegation, Scott Peters, Mike Levin, Juan Vargas. So, the list could go on, as well as very proud to have the support of our firefighters who trust me to protect our communities, especially from wildfires, because that is one of my big priorities. Our nurses, our frontline health providers, our lifeguards. I'm a lifelong surfer and lifelong environmentalist, and they know I'm going to be a strong voice for protecting our open spaces from sprawl development, particularly fighting projects like Lilac Hills that happened, it was a big issue in Escondido in the last couple of years, but as well as protecting our beaches and our coastlines from pollution. And would be really honored to have the vote and the support of all the citizens and residents of Escondido. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you both for those introductions. We're going to divide the Q and A up into kind of three general topics, which you'll be very familiar with, or critical topics for the region, those being housing, the economy, and transportation. So, if it's okay with you, we'll start with you, Tara Lawson-Reimer, about housing. San Diego is in a major housing crisis and has been for years. How do you plan to support the creation of new housing?
It's such a good question, because it's one of my major priorities as supervisor, will be to tackle the affordable crisis, housing crisis head-on. So, just to give people a sense of what's going on, we have more than enough housing at 120% of median income. You know, we're building McMansions, we're building homes that people can purchase and afford if they're on the higher-income spectrum. For our very low-income San Diegans, we don't have enough housing, but the real donut hole, the real problem, is for middle-income San Diegans. So, it's not the sort of classic category of affordable housing, which is definitely a problem and requires more work, but it's this category of the housing that people like me are looking to live in, right? Where it's just so hard to figure out how to afford to raise a family in San Diego, because there just isn't enough housing stock available. So, there's a couple of things that I'm really focused on. One, one of the major costs of housing comes from all the delays in construction. And so, I'm really looking at how do we bump any housing to the head of the line in the process of getting approvals? That's going to provide housing at that donut hole, at that middle-income level, and that the homes that we're looking to build, that to provide for middle-income San Diegans, I think should basically get to cut the line, go to the front of the line, reduce the time and delays to get their permits, so that they can then cut housing costs, and it becomes a lot more profitable for developers to actually invest in building affordable housing, because they're not waiting and waiting and waiting so long to get approvals, and we can really streamline those processes. We don't need more of the big McMansions. They can go to the back of the line. The affordable home should go to the front of the line. So, that would cut both time and costs. So, that's one area that I'm very focused on, and that's something you can absolutely do at the county in terms of the regulatory processes. The second thing that I'm looking at is county land, and what kind of county land is available that we could rezone and make available for housing? And I don't think we've done an adequate job of really assessing what's out there, what those options are, and what we could transfer to use for housing. The third thing I would say is, you know, there's always a lot of arguments that we need to build sprawl development in places that are really vulnerable to fires, because we need more housing. And I think when you look at the projects that are getting approved, those are not affordable projects. That's where the wool is being pulled over our eyes often by developers who are going, arguing that we need those homes because they're affordable, but actually, they're too expensive, people can't afford them. We're building these fire areas, which is then increasing our risk at fire, but also increasing all of our costs as taxpayers to have to pay for those fire services in these fire-prone areas, not to mention increasing traffic and commute times, because then you have people living very, very far from where they work, because that's where the homes are being built. And then, we're all suffering the consequences, because we're all seeing the increases in traffic. So, I think we need to absolutely prioritize building affordable homes much closer to where people live and work, and not violating our general plan and building in sprawl areas. And this is definitely an area where my opponent and I differ. You know, there's a lot of good reasons to choose one of us versus the other, because we have some significant policy differences. And this is definitely one of them, that I would put a stop to these general plan amendments and focus on building affordable homes closer to where people live and work.
Thank you. Supervisor, same question to you.
Sure. Thank you. Well, this is certainly an area where we differ, because my opponent will put a stop to the construction of all housing. Just take a look at who's supporting my opponent's candidacy. At this point in time, if you can imagine, there are 5,000 homes that are stuck in the courtroom, 5,000 homes just in the county side alone. They are stuck in litigation. They are stuck in jail, so to speak, by the very environmental groups that endorse my candidate for office. That's highly problematic, because a lot of these projects are general plan projects that are still fiercely fought, to the degree where I beg these environmental groups to sit down with me. I would roll out a map of all of San Diego and show me where you will not fight a project, and they can't indicate a single parcel. This is the situation we're in. It starts with a failed plan. If you fail to plan, plan to fail. Age-old saying, never goes wrong. But here's what happens. Every 10 years, the state comes up with a demand. They come up with the projections on how many new housing units we will have to build to protect our children, to protect us as we age in our community. Over the last 10 years, and we're nearing the end of that housing cycle, the number was 150,000 units. These are units we needed to construct in order to protect the people who live in San Diego. Well, guess what? At the end of that housing cycle, we've only constructed 50,000 units. We're 100,000 units short. This is a massive problem. If you drill down deeper on the 50,000 units that we actually built, if you look at what's affordable, 40,000 of those homes are in the above-income category, and only 10 for the very low-to-moderate income earners in San Diego. And you wonder why traffic is so bad in this region, because people have jobs here in San Diego they need to get to. They would love to live in San Diego, but unfortunately, because environmental activists are holding all of our projects hostage, they don't have the ability to live here and to raise a family here into the future. So, that's a big problem. Delays are one thing, construction costs another. Lots of bureaucratic red tape in the way, good work that's been done along the way. Red Tape Reduction Task Force produced brilliant results. What we're trying to do is take that work and implement those policies so that we can really reduce the cost of construction as well. But a great thing we could do to actually construct homes would be to get those homes out of the courtroom and out into our community for our families. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question you both touched on, but a number of our members have said you've been working with the Development Services Department and dealing with, you know, the long amounts of time it takes to get projects approved and permits issued, and that it seems like some other counties have a more streamlined process. In the county with a massive housing crisis, obviously, this is more concerning. Is there anything being done to improve these departments and their processes, or what needs to be done? And we'll start with you, Supervisor.
Sure. Well, I did something a lot less than traditional. When I got to the county, I actually have a picture, if you come to my office, a canvas of a housewife, because the way that I found the county is everything's perfect. Just look away, don't ask any questions, everything we're doing is perfect. And I knew that couldn't be the case, because this is an area where we're really struggling with development services. I hear this time and time again. People have sat in my office, they've told me of the issues that they've been confronted with with their projects. I needed to understand that. So, my less-than-traditional approach was to invite myself to a lot of different meetings that were happening internally, and staff was always shocked to see me there. But there's a certain meeting where a developer, for example, can call together all the different departments to one table, and they pay for that sort of thing. They pay for everyone to come together and talk about the delays in their project. Now, I sat in one of these meetings, and the staff really was uncomfortable. And that's okay, because it really helped me understand one of the biggest hurdles that we're facing in development services is that every department is working in a very siloed approach. Yes, they're all reviewing the same project, but they're only looking through their single lens. And what happens with that is that an applicant walks away thinking one thing will get them over the finish line for their project, only to find that the finish line is a lot farther down the road than they ever imagined, because another department tells them they've got six more things to do. This type of thing where we bring all minds to one table would be a really important thing to do from the onset. The other thing that I've said to the development community, it's really important how you engage out in the community. If you come to a community meeting and you roll out your shop plans of your development or something that you're putting into a community, that usually is a mistake. It's a lot better to take a step back, to sit down and meet with the community, hear their standing concerns. What's the situation on the ground today? What are improvements they'd like to see in their community before ever putting a plan in front of them? That way, the plan can really take into account those voices a lot earlier on. So, we have a lot of work to do. The great thing that I think I've been able to offer to this situation is not just accepting that everything is going well, but challenging the status quo and really pushing those institutional boundaries to make positive changes. One more thing I'd like to point to is my Building Better Roads initiative. I was trying to figure out a way that we can pave more lane miles for less money. And the most important thing that could have happened was bringing minds to a table again. I called for a roundtable in the city of Escondido. We brought industry together, and we talked about how we could do things better as a region. And it turned out there were very simple things that we could do that were not only more environmentally friendly, but more cost-effective, and that's led to some positive changes that we can improve services. So, a lot of attention to detail in a process like this, but, you know, asking industry, asking our residents, very important as we move forward with these decisions.
Same question.
Great. I just want to repeat the question, since that was a very long answer. So, make sure I have the question correct, which was, you were asking how we could improve the actions and activities of our Development Services Department. Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, some of our members have relayed that the turnaround time for permits and dealing with the SD at the county, seems like it could be more efficient, streamlined. So, how would you address that if you were elected to Supervisor?
Yeah. So, I did outline one of them. I mean, I agree, we have a lot of work to do in that regard. That's why the first thing I said when I asked this question about housing was to address some of the streamlining issues. The other thing I think is really important is to look at where there's been a lot faster approval processes, and where you've been able to bring environmentalists and community members and impacted communities to the table with developers, with people who want to build affordable housing upfront, and do the work to create a full, wide community plan, so that then, after you do that, which is a longer process, but once you do that, then it's basically a stamp to then get any specific individual project approved. So, there's some work on the front end in terms of doing the consultations and getting buy-in and making sure people share a vision of that community planning process. But once you do, then project by project, it's a lot more streamlined for developers and creates a lot more certainty, and would really expedite making sure that everyone is happy, that the needs of the community are being met, but also that we're building the housing that we need. I do just want to correct the record. My understanding is that there are no lawsuits holding up any projects that are in compliance with the general plan. So, my opponent did mention that there were lawsuits holding up projects that are in compliance with the general plan. My understanding is that there are not. In fact, that those lawsuits are there, because we did have a countywide process of developing a general plan of where we wanted to build and what kind of building we wanted to have in different parts of our county. And the lawsuits have been brought, because those projects are not in compliance with the general plan. And I really am proud to have the support of, as my opponent mentioned, a number of environmental groups who've been fighting for our quality of life ever since I can remember, the Sierra Club and the Climate Defenders, the League of Conservation Voters. And I'm proud to fight with them to be able to figure out how we get affordable housing for our residents and our young generation, but do it in a way that protects our quality of life and protects our environment, and really protects what makes San Diego such a special place to begin with. Because I think what we all want is affordable housing that doesn't end up paving over San Diego, making it look like LA, building all over the places that all of us like to go hiking and enjoy nature. And that's what I'm committed to, is bringing all those stakeholders to the table. And I think that's why I do have support from all sides of this debate, and particularly from environmentalists, as well as people who make their living investing in affordable housing, because they are looking for the kind of partner who can bring those stakeholders together.
Thank you. I'm going to transition the conversation a little bit. A number, obviously being a business chamber, of our members are small business owners who are impacted greatly by the ongoing pandemic and the results that has on their business. How will you support the business community and the economic development of the region as we continue to navigate through the challenges caused by COVID-19? Maybe, Tara, you could take that first?
Sure. Couple things. I'm evidence-based in everything I do. You know, as you mentioned, I'm an economist by training, and so I always look to the evidence, look to what's working. So, the thing that's been most striking about how economies have gotten back on track, looking around the world at what's worked and what hasn't worked, the places that they are reopened, where it was a real quick bounce back, they invested in public health, they really focused on getting those case numbers down, first and foremost. They did that, they did that together. Everyone pulled their weight. People wore masks, everyone wore a mask. They didn't have indoor dining. They have been very aggressive on testing and contact tracing, so they could be testing asymptomatic people, that they could contact trace very, very quickly, so they could pinpoint the spread. And so, that investment in public health is what then led the virus numbers to go low, and then they could reopen, and they could have a very quick bounce back. I want to just point out a couple of studies that I thought were really instructive. My colleague, when I was in the Obama administration, Austin Goolsbee, he was in the Council of Economic Advisers. He's now an economist at the University of Chicago. So, he did a bunch of research looking at how COVID's been impacting economies and what policies has been most effective across lots and lots of cities, counties, all over the world. And this was his clear conclusion, that reducing case numbers is the main driver in how you can get your economy restarted. And the reason for that is you need to have consumer confidence that it's safe to go out, and you also need to have business confidence that it's safe to reopen and that they're not going to get yoddyed around, that they're not going to reopen, close, reopen, close. So, I think the big mistake we've made is the kind of policies my opponent has been advancing, which is trying to reopen too soon. You know, back in May, she was calling to reopen San Diego in lockstep with Donald Trump, when he was calling to reopen the United States. And I think that's the wrong approach. First, we invest in public health. The second thing we have to do is acknowledge that there is a disproportionate impact of this virus. It's disproportionate impact from a health perspective, but also from an economic perspective. And the folks that are most impacted in our region are a lot of low-wage workers who are job insecure, and a lot of small businesses, who particularly restaurants and bars, who are not able to operate in this context. And so, we have a particular obligation as a county to protect those vulnerable workers, to ensure that they have access to emergency food services, emergency health services, that they have the support that they need in terms of rental assistance to get through these hard times, and that our businesses as well have that support. I do not think it's right to expect our businesses to pay out of their own pocket to redo and redesign their entire company and their entire, how they operate, and put up partitions and build out new dining facilities out of their own pocket. I think the county should be helping out with those expenses, and we've done a little bit, but we certainly could do more. And that would be a priority for me as a supervisor, is to make sure that the folks who are unfortunately very unfairly bearing a disproportionate impact from either the virus directly or from the economic shakedown of the virus, do receive the support that they need. And I'm particularly focused on making sure that our small businesses, you know, they get support with paying for PPE, business loans, and any of those investments that they need. One of the things I do want to give credit to the city of San Diego for, and I think we need to do more of, is making outdoor dining facilities available that previously had not been available, and making sure that there's access to streets and alleys and other places, so that companies and businesses, and particularly restaurants, can operate and operate safely.
Thank you, Supervisor.
There's a fundamental disconnect between a business owner and my opponent, who's written a book about being a business owner. We don't want a lifeline, we don't want relief, we don't want additional loans that are out there and subsidies and food. What we want is to keep our doors open and to protect our employees. Make one thing clear here. We've spent, as a county, a half a billion dollars on public health over the past 208 days of this pandemic response. That doesn't even account all the adaptive measures that our businesses have spent to make sure that they had safe reopenings. And unfortunately, my opponent is entirely inaccurate, and probably because she was out campaigning, so busy campaigning, she didn't even see where I was, and that was in the chair, walking hand in hand with our business community. I have never once stepped in front of our public health officer. I have not once stepped in front of our governor's orders. The reality of the situation is, they are calling the shots. What I did do was make sure that our business community was prepared. Very early on, understanding the relief, this was like a lifesaver at the time. That's all we had to cling to, were relief measures, because it became a cash-on-hand game. How long can I keep my employees on payroll? How long can I cover their medical expenses? Because the people that work for me, I care about them, I know their families. I want to make sure that they're safe into the future. We had to meet our employees where they were. We had employees that were scared, we had some that were high-risk, we had some with childcare concerns, and we needed to make sure that we were accommodating all of these needs. The same thing was true out in the community. I worked diligently, business by business, whether it be on a site visit or from my office, making sure that they were prepared with safe reopening plans, making sure they were checking all of the boxes that our public health team expected of them. And the reason that they were prepared, not wasting a day, when the governor said go, or public health officer said go, is because people like me were in the chair. My opponent was out running a campaign, and that, to me, is really tough to understand. When asked before about what she was doing to protect our businesses during the COVID response, she said she picked up the phone and called a few elderly neighbors. That is entirely unacceptable. You need a leader in the moment of crisis that's willing to do everything it takes to protect people, always be that leader for our business community. Perhaps the most important thing I can do to support our businesses is to stay in this seat, because I am the only business owner on the Board of Supervisors, and it's clear to me, there's a major disconnect between elected leaders and business owners.
And it's clear to me, there's a major disconnect between elected leaders and business owners. And I've been able to bridge that gap because I fundamentally understand what our businesses are going through at all times. And it's not just COVID too. Let me remind you of all of the decisions that have been made by elected leaders, small little changes that elected officials think nothing about, but the cumulative impact of those changes are major game changes for these businesses. They put them out of business. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Can I, you know, I just, I don't know if we want to ensure people are, are being factual in our statements, but there were, I do want to point out that my opponent said she's never criticized public health officials. I'm actually looking at a June 19th headline saying Gaspar blasts county health officials.
If you watch the interview Tara, it's actually not the case. I don't get to choose what headlines these stations use, but please watch the video and you'll see. Inside and I invite everyone to take a look at that as well. But let's not, we can do the back and forth thing. I just don't think it's part of this format. But moderator can make that determination.
Yeah, I think we can move on to the next question, which is related. And Tara, you can take this one on. It, it doesn't often feel like it at this moment in time, but you know, at some point we will come out the other side of the coronavirus pandemic. When that occurs, there's going to be a lot of work that's needed to help our, our businesses be successful. So what are your plans for rebuilding the economy once COVID-19 is over? Supervisor, we can start with you.
Sure. Thank you very much. Well, the most important thing is to provide a maximum amount of flexibility out there. You've seen a lot of adaptations, a lot of leniency in our policies. They afford the opportunity for businesses to operate outside. It's a really great idea to allow these businesses to continue in that format for a while. The other piece that was really critical is working with various business sectors and associations to understand how we might create policy now that will help with the ultimate reopenings of these businesses. One example is when I partnered with California Restaurant Association on the local level. They identified a variety of fees and things that we could be waiving inspections that we could make easier so that they could get their doors back open. We need to continue to discuss what are the hurdles? What are the roadblocks to getting you back up and running, bringing your workforce back? Childcare is a major issue in this county. This is something I've been a champion for. On the county level, we have 17,000 employees or one of the region's largest employers. What I was trying to do at the county using our facilities is make sure that we had onsite childcare. This would lift quite a demand off of other childcare providers. Right now, we have a major deficit of childcare providers. At the same time, we need to be there for our schools as well. When it comes to our school reopenings, I've supported a hybrid approach. Please keep in mind, not all kids are able to go back, even if they want to right now. They may be in a household where there's an at-risk family member, or they might be more at risk at this time as well. Again, another area where we have to meet people where they are, we have to provide distance learning opportunities for these kids. I've been a champion for hubs out in the community, opening up our public spaces to allow our kids to learn in that distance learning format as well. That's really important. So we have to think about our workforce, how we protect them, how we can return them to work. We also need to think about how we can rebound here. I mean, the latest projections are that our economy won't be fully restored till the year 2026. So we have a long road here for San Diego. We really need to bring our unemployment numbers down. At this point in time, we have a quarter of a billion San Diegans that are out of work. And that's really scary. It's, it's twice unemployment that we saw during, I'm sorry, a quarter of a million, not billion. 250,000 San Diegans out of work, twice as many unemployed as if you added up all the years of the Great Recession. So a lot of work ahead. We've got to work closely with all of our business sectors. And we have to be mindful of policy that we can create on the local level to make their lives a little bit easier, not harder. This is why I do not support things like Proposition 15. My opponent is a major supporter of Proposition 15, thinks it will help the small business community to add taxes back to them. Thinks it only impacts big property owners. That is simply not the case. Triple nets are a real thing. Those costs are passed down to all of the tenants, all of the small businesses. It will drive up the cost of doing business. That certainly is a policy that runs contrary to helping the business community. Thank you.
Thanks. And Tara, I'll give you an opportunity to discuss Proposition 15 here. But would you mind letting us know how you intend to, you know, support business after the pandemic to ensure that we keep our businesses open and successful?
Yeah, thank you. It's such a good question. So I, I want to say first, a lot of what my opponent outlined, I think are fine ideas. And I, I'm really looking forward to having a dialogue with the folks in this forum and in the, in the Escondido Chamber about what you all need to, to really operate effectively and to get back on your feet. And I'm going to be listening to you and be a champion for what you need. But I do think it's a little bit small-minded, right? We are facing a crisis unlike any that our economy has faced since the Great Depression. I mean, be very realistic about what's at stake and what's going to be required. And I'll be honest, the kind of policies my opponent just outlined sounded a lot like Herbert Hoover in 1929. And I don't think that went very well for America in the Great Depression. So I think there's a lot more we can do. I'm really excited about some of the, the initiatives that your mayor is championing around making Escondido a hub for sustainable farming and really scaling up agriculture and sustainable agriculture in Escondido and in the surrounding areas. And I know there's going to be a need for the county to be a real partner in that endeavor. And that's one of my big priorities, particularly for this community. I think more broadly across San Diego County, there's no question that climate change presents both an enormous challenge, but also a big opportunity. Because if we get ahead of this, if we really focus on what we need to do to make a difference on climate, that is also going to be a real job creator. You know, when we help businesses retrofit their buildings, when we help homeowners make sure that they can weatherize to reduce carbon emissions, that creates jobs, that creates business for people in our community. When we are partnering with the business community to bring down costs and bring down carbon emissions, that creates opportunities here as well. And so I, we can talk more, I know this wasn't a climate change question, but I think there's a lot about how we're going to invest as a community to tackle climate that's going to create jobs for the San Diego region and help get us through this economic crisis. That is our future. Another area that I think is unfortunately not adequately thought about or addressed and certainly is going to be one of my big priorities is partnering with our biotech community. Biotech Beach is in our district as well. I've been under, with a lot of conversations with our, our business leaders in the biotech community about what do they need to attract jobs, attract workers, make our community San Diego a really good place for them to grow and them to invest? How we can build better relationships with our universities, with UCSD, where I teach, with SDSU, with some of our community colleges, where we can find more synergies between our academic institutions and our biotech community? Because for every job that's created at one of these big employers, there's a ripple effect of four additional dollars of spending in the San Diego regional economy. So it creates demand at our restaurants, it creates demand at all of our small businesses. It creates demand for all the services that we need in San Diego. So that's another way that I will be looking to get our economy back on track. So again, looking to partner with you on what are the daily nuts and bolts things that you all need? Looking on opportunities for Escondido agriculture and sustainable agriculture, looking for climate investments that are going to be our green carbon future. And also looking to increase jobs in the biotech sector because we know that those have massive ripple, ripple effects that benefit all of us in the San Diego economy.
Thank you. So one of the questions we're getting from our audience members is related to Proposition 15. And Supervisor Gaspar, you highlighted your position. Do you want to expand on, you know, what exactly is your position on Prop 15? And Tara will ask the same question to you as well.
Sure. Thank you for the opportunity. Well, as you can hear, my opponent wants to partner with you so much that she doesn't even value or know what chamber she's even speaking to tonight. This isn't the Escondido Chamber that you're speaking to. This is the North San Diego Business Chamber that I've been really proud to partner with over the past several years. Proposition 15, the only other thing I'll say, the only place that thing belongs is in the shredder. And that's all I have to say. I mean, driving up the cost of all goods and services during an economic crisis makes absolutely no sense. Raising up the cost of operating a small business through taxes, property taxes, triple net, very bad idea. An economist should certainly understand that.
Tara, your response?
Well, first of all, last time I checked, Escondido is in North County. So unless you've unilaterally redrawn the geographic lines of our region, I am talking about this region. Escondido is an important part of North County. And anyone from Escondido listening, I'm sorry if you felt insulted by being excluded from North County, where I live as well. So, but on the, the question presented on Proposition 15. So I am a big supporter of Prop 15. It's called Schools and Communities First Initiative. And this is definitely an area where my opponent and I differ. I stand with Joe Biden on this issue. He's endorsed Prop 15. He knows how important it is for our communities. It is a fix to Prop 13. A Prop 13 was passed many, many years ago in the late seventies to protect property owners, homeowners and small businesses. And Prop 15 continues to protect homeowners and small businesses. The only entities on which property taxes will increase are very large companies like Chevron, which is bankrolling the entire campaign against Prop 15. So I would understand why there might be a lot of misinformation out there, like what's being shared by my opponent because there's a lot of money behind that misinformation campaign. But I am very proud to stand with Joe Biden. And to give a little bit more context, I don't want to get into all the nuts and bolts and nitty gritty. We don't have enough time, but a couple of things people should note. The funds go to our schools, which is going to be very vital to reopen our schools, especially in the time of COVID. The reason that we haven't been able to reopen our schools is because they don't have the resources necessary in order to allow for the kind of social distancing and the investments in equipment that are needed. And so if we want to get our schools reopened, we are going to need to have resources for them. Money is not going to go, grow on a tree. And so that is incredibly important. And that's an important linchpin for our economy as a whole. Because when kids can't go to school, it impacts everyone. It impacts all the folks who have school-aged children and can't send their kids to school, as well as being very detrimental to the future of San Diego's population, our young people, our future workers who are missing a year, potentially more of learning. So that's a huge priority. And the second place that the money goes is to support our cities and counties. And to make sure that we do have the money that we need to invest in public health. And as I said from the outset, the core linchpin of getting our economies back on track is consumer and business confidence and getting our case numbers down. So the number one thing we can do to help our economy is invest in public health. To do so, we absolutely need support and, and Prop 15 is an important way to get that. I want to just take one side note, and I don't want to get too stuck in this. But there are lots of economists, not me alone, who agree that Prop 15 is not going to raise property taxes or is not going to raise taxes on small businesses because of the way that the rental market operates. That if all of a sudden your landowner tried to jack up your rent way through the roof, but there's 65, 70% of landowners in your neighborhood are not being affected at all by Prop 15, they're going to be able to continue to rent to you at a much lower rate and they're just going to move. And the reason that they're not going to just jack up the rents is because they are currently getting what's called a profit surplus. That's actually the economics term for it, is when you have a profit surplus because you don't have to charge market rates because you have a wedge and you have a, you have a tax advantage. And they're exploiting that tax advantage on the back of our small businesses. And that is what Prop 15 will fix. And I, my opponent, I understand she is going to disagree with me. All I can say is I really hope that everyone does their own research and doesn't listen to Chevron's advertising campaigns.
Thank you. Supervisor, I'm going to, we'd be remiss if we didn't hit on a major topic pick that's, you know, vitally important to the North San Diego region. And that's the topic of infrastructure and transportation. In your opinion, what are the infrastructure needs of our region and how would you address those needs? Past transit, roads, our freeways, et cetera?
Sure. Well, first, a good example, I often point to this because I'm an advocate for balanced transportation for our region, a system that's practical for our region that meets our needs. So here's the good example, and it's right in my hometown. If you look at the work that's happening on the five, there's the installation of the long-awaited HOV lane on the five. And that's happening right over the San Luis Obispo Lagoon restoration, right next door to double tracking of the coaster over the top of pedestrian and bike paths. Talk about a win for San Diego. I'd like to see a lot more of that. Unfortunately, that's not how our investments have been made over time. Since I was seven years old, there were lots of promised projects. And you've been paying a lot in taxes to achieve those projects. In fact, an extra half cent in sales tax every time you spend in San Diego was supposed to go into a balanced transportation system for this region. Sadly, that has not happened and it will continue to not happen unless you have people willing to put the feet of Sandag to the fire. And that's exactly what I've been willing to do. Keep in mind that every time you fill up at the pump, 70 cents of every gallon is taxes alone. That's a tremendous amount. So what do we do in the middle of an economic crisis? We have an executive director of the region's transportation system proposing a $177 billion transportation plan for the region. Now, this plan cannot be afforded through all of those taxes that we've taken from you. The only way to afford this plan is through an additional sales tax on top of what you are already paying and on the hook for, for another 20 or so years. This is highly problematic in the middle of an economic crisis. The other piece that's necessary to pay for this plan is charging to drive in the general purpose lanes of the highway as well. Now, my opponent loves to walk the fence, loves to not take a position on things. But I think voters have the right to know whether or not you support a $177 billion plan that ultimately will end in an additional tax increase in this region. She's talking about a feasibility study that doesn't even exist. She's clinging to waiting for a feasibility study. She's had two years to take a look at this plan. I currently sit on Sandag, on our Regional Transportation Agency. If my opponent replaces me, she will be in my chair. I'm hopeful that the chamber will ask whether or not she supports this because there is no feasibility plan. The only thing being studied right now is whether this plan will comply with the state law. Let me be clear on one thing, we have to comply with state law. I will only support a plan that complies with state law. But I am interested to know, do you support a $177 billion transportation plan for this region that ultimately will increases, increase taxes for all of our residents and businesses again?
Thank you, Tara.
Yep. Well, my opponent is right. There is no feasibility study yet. I don't know why, since she sits on the board, she hasn't called for one to be implemented and done. That would certainly be my first step and my first thing when considering a $177 billion tax plan. You know, I just want to say, again, you know, there's a lot of hyperbole in any kind of political debate, right? But I always take the approach of looking at the evidence, looking at the facts. And we know that it's really important for the future of San Diego to have investments in transit solutions. We know that too many of us spend so much time idling in traffic. And it very much degrades not only our quality of life, but the opportunities for businesses to grow in our communities and even the attractiveness of San Diego as a place for businesses to invest. When I've been in my conversations with the leaders of some of the biotech companies, that is one of the things they point to time and again, that we absolutely need to be looking at transit solutions if they want to be looking at bringing more investment and bringing more jobs to San Diego. But I can't take a position on something that we don't have any information about. And I think that there's two kinds of feasibility studies that we need that we haven't done. And we'd be the first thing I would call for. One is a sort of a more traditional one, which is, which is often called a feasibility study, which is looking at what are going to be the impacts on our communities, our, our, how we, how we live, how we work, what's going to work, what's going to be effective, whether this is actually going to meet the goals and the targets that have been outlined and that are included in the, in the proposal. The second one is what I bring to this with my work at the World Bank, where I did do the work at looking at big scale investment projects and whether they were good ideas or bad ideas for countries that were in much worse economic conditions than, than we are. And particularly, we worked a lot on infrastructure investment and looked at how do you know when it's a good benefit? When it's a, when it's a win for taxpayers to invest in infrastructure? Because we know we have to invest in infrastructure. If we didn't, we'd all still be whacking through trees with a, with a machete. Because what else do you, I mean, that's what a road is. It's infrastructure that the government has built. So we know that infrastructure investment is really vital for our quality of life, but also for our businesses. But you have to do the assessment about But you have to do the assessment about which, which investments really have the payoff. And that is the other thing that we need to do, is do an economic study. It's a, you, what you're doing is basically looking at what are the multiplier effects for the, a dollar spent on a particular set of investments in terms of how they're targeted and how they're designed and over what time period? This is very standard practice in World Bank investments that do do mass infrastructure projects around the world. There's lots of expertise to do this, and that's the kind of perspective I will bring to the county board, is making sure that we are bringing best practices from around the world to the work we're doing to serve the eighth-largest metropolitan region in the country. I mean, I think it's pretty appalling that we don't have leadership like my opponent currently on the, on the Sandag Board, who are calling for those kinds of studies that we absolutely need. And I'd say one last thing on this, I'm excited about a San Diego that understands that we are a regional economy, that looks at us as part of a binational economy with Mexico. That's the San Diego that I'm excited to help lead. And I think that we do need to think and look at what are our collective challenges? What are the things that no one can solve alone? And one of the things that no one can solve alone is traffic and congestion and not being able to get from school to work or home. That is why we have to come together to solve these kinds of problems, and that is what I'm going to be fighting for as your next supervisor.
Thank you. And we're approaching the end of our, our session here. We appreciate your time. I want to give you ample time to provide some closing thoughts. And so with that, I'll turn it over to you, Supervisor Gaspar, for your final thoughts tonight.
Sure, thank you. Well, it's important to note that AB 805 has led to North County having no voice on Sandag. Yes, it's true that bodies are in the chair, but unfortunately, a weighted vote is called, and San Diego and Chula Vista rule the day. One of Tara's top supporters is Lorena Gonzalez. She was the author of AB 805, and it's really unfortunate that North and East County has lost their voice at Sandag, and that fundamentally needs to change. And in Tara's theoretical land, there's one of those money trees that's out there. I don't need a feasibility study to tell me that this $177 billion plan is all wrong for San Diego in the middle of an economic crisis, where there isn't a sector that has not been affected in San Diego. And this really is the difference between myself and my opponent. I'm a CFO of a small business. I run a small business just like all of you. Tara has read a book about running a small business. Very important that you have elected officials in the chair that understand the needs of the business community. I will continue to fight for you in the chair, and that's why you hear me very vocal on my regional service boards. I take my message back to you, back to our chambers, back to the people, because we have very little power while we sit there in the chair because of these destructive decisions that have happened. Make no mistake, this election has a lot hinging on it. The future of rebuilding the San Diego economy is one of the top things that's out there. This won't decide whether it's a Republican or a Democrat majority on the board. This election will decide whether SEIU 221, our local labor union, who has invested a million dollars to put my opponent in the chair, whether they will be in charge of calling the shots. And if they're successful, a lot will change. You know, you hear about the number of San Diegans that are really in distress at this point in time, a million people in our safety net program, 900,000 San Diegans that don't know where their next meal is coming from, 60% of our businesses getting hit hard through this pandemic, so many closures, so much work ahead. This is not the time to siphon precious tax dollars over to labor union bosses, because believe me, when they get in control of these boards, they frequently, frequently remind those who they brought to the dance, you can see that with one of the elected officials that they've recently seated. San Diego should never be in the hands of labor union bosses. San Diego should always be in the hands of servant leaders, and it's been my honor and will be my honor to continue to serve in this role. Thank you for your time tonight, and most importantly, please continue to reach out to me for help and support with, with your businesses during this incredibly challenging time. Thank you.
Thank you, supervisor. Tara, to you for closing remarks.
Great. Well, thank you so much for having me. It's really wonderful to be here. Before I jump into my final remarks, I just want to point out, my opponent has a habit of telling complete lies about me. So another one being that I am not a small business owner, which I am. I've been running a small business since 2014 in Encinitas. So again, anytime you hear anything that she says about me, you might want to fact-check it. But moving on from there, you know, I do think voters have a really big choice in this election. And it is true, there is a lot at stake. There's a lot at stake for the future of San Diego. My opponent has attacked me many times for having this support of SEIU, which I'm very proud of, because those are our county workers. When we talk about what we need to do to tackle COVID, tackle public health, make sure that foster kids are able to get into foster care, to make sure that our homeless get the services that they need, the people who are doing that, those are our county workers. And I think our county workers deserve respect, and they deserve dignity. And the reason our county workers, our county employees, the 17,000 people that my opponent has missed, mentioned a number of times, have endorsed me is because they know I will treat them with respect and dignity. And I think the most important thing in running any entity, be a small business to a big county, is making sure that you have the confidence and the respect of the folks who are on the front lines doing the work. Because if you don't have the respect and you can't support them to do their jobs, then you're not doing your job. So I think we need to be supporting and respecting and treating with dignity our nurses, our epidemiologists, our county park rangers, and that is one of the things I will be doing very differently than my opponent and differently than our current Board of Supervisors for the last generation. Because there's no question that many of the, the challenges that we face in San Diego have resulted from a failure to invest in the kind of services that our most vulnerable members of our community need and deserve. And that is something that I will do very, very differently on the Board of Supervisors. I also want to say, I am a big supporter of one person, one vote. I know my opponent has attacked the fact that she doesn't get an extra vote on Sandag. I think it's really important that you do have one person, one vote. So I will continue to support our democratic processes as a Board of Supervisor. And again, I just want to take a moment to outline what's really at stake and what's really different about us. I think everyone has the right to have their own political opinions and their own views, and I would never attack anyone personally for having their own views. But I think it's important that voters choose the representative that best aligns with your values, with our values here in our community in District Three. And my opponent has been a strong supporter of Donald Trump since day number one, was one of his earliest endorsers. Her attempt to try to claim that she works with everyone is transparently an attempt to hide her longstanding support and allegiance to the Trump administration. I mean, she's gone so far as to put Nathan Fletcher, who she tweets at on a regular basis on her mailers, to claim that she works with him. When, and he, he's so incensed about this, that he's been sending out calls and calling voters, telling them that this is actually not true, that she's impossible to work with, and she can't work with him. The governor who she claims to work with, she's been busy suing the governor, and he, the governor endorsed me. So if we're looking for a problem solver, looking for someone who can get things done, I am very proud to have earned the support and endorsement, as I said, of virtually every elected official in San Diego, but also our firefighters, our lifeguards, our nurses, our teachers, the folks that are on the front line serving our community every single day. I am also want to point out that there are some big differences on the COVID response. Our current supervisor, Gaspar, was in lockstep with Donald Trump on calling to reopen. I take a very different approach. I think we need to be investing in public health first and putting evidence first. There's some big differences on how we think about healthcare. She supports the president in his attempts to repeal the Affordable Care Act, which would leave 400,000 San Diegans without healthcare in the middle of a pandemic. I think that that's appalling. She supports the, the Trump administration's refusal to take action on gun violence. She opposes any ban on military-style assault weapons. She, the, the list goes on.
Sorry, we're running out of time, so if you could just quick wrap up?
As you can tell, the list in which, of which my opponent and Trump stand arm-in-arm is very long, including her voting to spend taxpayer money to, to join a Trump administration lawsuit against our own state of California. So again, I think it's going to be clear for the voters. I trust the voters. I think the voters know what we need in our community. They're going to choose a representative that's going to fight for us, it's going to fight for our quality of life, and is going to fight for our values here in San Diego, and it would really be an honor to earn your support.
Thank you both very much. Fortunately, we're out of time this evening, but we sincerely appreciate your participation, Supervisor Gaspar, and your participation, Tara Lawson-Reimer, for this important dialogue. One thing we can all agree on is this is a critical election, and we appreciate your time in helping our members better understand your position so that they can make informed votes on November 4th.
Thank you, Joe, and thank you to the North San Diego Business Chamber tonight.
Thank you.
See you soon.
Thank you all, really appreciate your time.
Thank you for the time. And a quick note for our attendees, we will be taking a short break and coming back at 6:15 to resume with the 50th Congressional District. Thank you again, Tara and Kristen, for your time. I appreciate you guys. So with that, I will put us on a brief pause, and we will be back here shortly.